Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Health. At this time, please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. We thank you for your kind cooperation. At this time, please do not approach today. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and happy Pride Month. I am Councilmember Lynn Schulman, Chair of the New York City Council's Committee on Health. Thank you all for joining us at today's hearings. I am joined by Councilmembers Sanchez and Mamorato. Today, we are considering two introductions and one resolution, which seek to expand access to affordable and high-quality health care across our city, including for LGBTQIA+ New Yorkers. I am particularly excited to hear my bill, Introduction 718, which would require New York City to establish a family-building benefit for city employees intended to cover some or all of the costs of assisted reproduction, including in vitro fertilization, or IVF, and adoption for city employees without conditioning reimbursement on a infertility diagnosis. In implementing these benefits, the city would be prohibited from discriminating on the basis of marital or partnership status. In the United States, numerous barriers such as lack of insurance, high out-of-pocket costs, limited information, restrictive laws and policies, stigma and provider bias, put fertility care out of reach for many. According to the Center for Reproductive Rights, a single cycle of IVF can cost an average of $20,000, and multiple cycles are often needed to achieve a pregnancy and live birth. Without insurance coverage, this cost is prohibitively expensive for most people, especially low-income families and communities of color. While some states like New York have insurance mandates for fertility care, they only apply to certain types of insurance, leaving many people unable to access insurance coverage for fertility care. Insurance policies often require enrollees to meet a specific clinical definition of infertility, the inability to become pregnant after six to 12 months of unprotected sexual intercourse before providing them coverage. This is the case even though assisted reproduction is also a critical method of family formation for single people and same-sex partners. Furthermore, a requirement that individuals undergo--
Chair, I can't hear on sound. Please, for a second.
Okay. There's a technical issue, sorry. We're having some technical difficulties. My apologies, everyone. Insurance policies often require enrollees to meet a specific clinical definition of infertility, the inability to become pregnant after six to 12 months of unprotected sexual intercourse before providing them coverage. This is the case even though assisted reproduction is also a critical method of family formation for single people and same-sex partners. Furthermore, a requirement that individuals undergo other forms of assisted reproduction before becoming eligible for IVF adds a financial barrier to meeting the eligibility requirements while still excluding individuals who do not have the necessary reproductive cells, or GEMEts, to reproduce via these other forms such as intrauterine insemination. Indeed, the city's own health insurance plan requires an infertility diagnosis before providing coverage, as current state law conditions coverage by large group insurance policies on obtaining such diagnosis. The New York State Department of Finance sought to eliminate the discriminatory impact of requiring an infertility diagnosis in 2021 by issuing guidance to insurers stating that individuals may also be eligible for IVF coverage if they are unable to conceive due to their sexual orientation or gender identity. But it is clear that confusion remains over what is covered and how much is covered. My bill would immediately address this confusion by prohibiting denial of coverage based on an infertility diagnosis and ensuring that any city employee looking to start a family can do so. Codifying this into law will ensure that nobody faces discrimination when seeking fertility care. With one of the largest LGBTQIA-plus communities in the country, I believe that our city's health insurance coverage must truly reflect our values as New Yorkers. Last week, we saw renewed focus on assisted reproduction in Washington, D.C., when Senate Republicans voted to block common-sense legislation that would guarantee access to IVF nationwide. Amid renewed attacks nationally on reproductive rights and LGBTQIA-plus communities, New York City has always been a role model for expansive access to comprehensive and inclusive care, but we should always be pushing to do better. And my bill being considered today moves us in the right direction. We must also demand action at the state level. The legislature must pass the Equity Infertility Treatment Act, which would amend the definition of infertility in state law and expand IVF coverage to include donor cycles, which would expand coverage to include same-sex couples and single adults. Health care is a human right, and that right includes every human. Nobody should be denied care. Thank you to my colleagues, the advocates, and members of the public, as well as Assistant Commissioner Aracena from DOHMH and First Deputy Commissioner Pollock from OLR for being here today. I would also like to thank my staff, Jonathan Boucher, my Chief of Staff, Kevin Macalia, Legislative Director, Andrew Davis, Legislative Fellow, and Jessica Siles, Communications Director, as well as the Health Committee staff, Christopher Pepe, Sarah Suter, Manure Butt, and Danielle Huffitz. I will now turn-- I will now-- I'm now going to turn it over to Councilmember Sanchez, who is going to speak on her bill on STIs today. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Schulman. Is this-- Is this working? It is, but I can't hear it. Okay. Thank you, Chair Schulman, for holding today's hearing on critical legislation and your leadership and support of Intro 435, which would expand access to HIV and STI rapid testing services across the city, seeking to help address steep inequities faced most starkly at the intersection of our Black, Latino, low-income, and LGBTQ+ populations, who are highly susceptible to contracting STIs without receiving adequate care. According to DOHMH's 2022 Sexually Transmitted Infections Surveillance Report, STIs continue to increase, and some of this increase can be accounted for by decreases in access to testing following reduced levels of testing and detection during COVID-- the COVID-19 pandemic. Chlamydia, gonorrhea are both-- have double the rate in low-income neighborhoods than they do in low-poverty neighborhoods. The Bronx is a-- has communities that face the highest rates of chlamydia, with some districts as high as 2,053 infections per 100,000 people. And in the Bronx also, we have 23,500 people living with HIV, over three times the rate of the New York-- of New York State, and the highest within New York City, more than double of those rates of Brooklyn, Queens, and Staten Island. We also face the highest rates of HIV and AIDS deaths. Following the release of the 2022 report, Commissioner Hassan noted the importance of promoting equitable access to care and delivery of services. All of these rates are highest and starkest among Black LGBTQ New Yorkers due to the stark lag-- a stark lag in access to care. Testing is an essential tool in stemming the spread of STIs, improving and saving lives, but it is contingent unnecessary resources being accessible for the people who need them. Testing is awareness, and awareness is prevention. For years, advocates have called for increased access to essential services like rapid testing across our city. I'm proud to be the sponsor for Intro 435 with the support of many members of this committee, including our chair, which will ensure the rapid testing services will be made available in at least four boroughs in the next two years, from today's baseline of an availability in only two. These sites will provide New Yorkers with same-day results in testing for chlamydia, gonorrhea, and HIV. This bill would also require DOHMH to engage in an education campaign in multiple languages to ensure communities know about these locations. I would like to thank the advocates from the bottom of my heart for all of the calls and all of the conversations and ushering this conversation and this legislation forward. The Caribbean Quality Project, Housing Works, Callan Lord, Vocal New York, Morris Heights Health Center, Latino Commission on AIDS, Health People, St. Anne's Harm Reduction, New York City Anti-Violence Project, African Services Committee, Black Health, Harlem Pride, Ally Fournay, and Destination Tomorrow. I'd also like to thank the administration for extensive good-faith discussions in bringing this bill to its current state from our discussions last year. And finally, and I'm sorry, most importantly for me, I'd like to thank Kadim Robinson, my Deputy Chief of Staff for Policy and Communications, who's a fierce and brilliant advocate, whose tireless work and dedication made this bill possible. Thank you, Kadim. I'm going to miss you. And with that, thank you so much, Chair.
I'll now turn it over to City Councilmember Noasis to make a statement about her resolution, calling on the state to establish full insurance coverage for fertility treatments, proposed Resolution 165-A.
Good morning, and thank you, Chair. As a registered nurse for over three decades, have seen firsthand how difficult it can be, especially for those that have financial difficulty. The proposed Resolution 165A is known as the Equity in Fertility Treatment Act. I feel strongly that everyone should have the same opportunity. After all, we are in New York City. We have to think about not only one person or two persons, but is all of us together. We're not living in a bubble. Whatever affected me can affect you. So if I'm having difficulty, I feel like we all have to come with a solution. And to start by, the Resolution 165A is an opportunity to say that we want equity throughout, especially when it comes to someone that have a family, that want to have a family, that not having the opportunity. Fertility is something that we need to talk about, because once your family having a difficulty having a baby, it becomes stressful all the family. And we're talking about more than the fertility. We're talking about mental health as well. And fertility is a medical condition recognized by the World Health Organization and the American Society for Reproductive Medicine that affects about 9% of American men and 10% of American women. So it is affecting people around us, and we have to take account for health care, and this is part of it. This is-- this is very, very important if someone cannot give birth, not because they don't want to, but they have a difficulty. And fertility affects a broad spectrum of prospective parents, no matter what race, religion, sexual orientation, and economic status. We deserve the same opportunity. So on-- the marriage couple that having difficulty having children is affecting all of us. According to the Center of Reproductive Right Fertility, it implicates and affects multi-human rights, including the right to plan the timing and spacing of children, benefit for scientific progress, health, sexual, and reproductive health, and non-discriminating-- discrimination. So talking about New York City, we cannot discriminate against each other. We have to create opportunity, and you have heard it in different ways from both of my colleagues. So I'm not here to keep you long. I'm saying it's a human right when you come to infertility. So we need to address it once and for all, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Noasis. I will now turn the mic to the Committee Council to administer the oath to the administration.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand.
Good morning.
Now, in accordance with the rules of the council, I will administer the affirmation to the witnesses from the mayoral administration. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee, and to respond honestly to councilmembers' questions? Assistant Commissioner?
I do.
You may proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair-- Chair Sherman and members of Committee on Health. My name is Joaquin Aracena. I'm the Assistant Commissioner for the Bureau of Public Health Clinics at the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. On behalf of the Health Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to testify on Introduction 435A, which would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to ensure accessibility to rapid testing for sexually transmitted infection prioritizing communities and boroughs that have higher infection rates as determined by the department. Since the New York City Health Department last testified on this bill in 2023, we've had extensive conversations with Councilmember Sanchez, committee staff, and City Hall regarding this legislation, and are supportive of moving it forward. I want to thank Councilmember Sanchez for her passionate advocacy in seeking to bring down STI rates in our city. We share our goal in this endeavor. I also want to thank the councilmember for discussing our concerns with this legislation, listening and working with us to come to a solution. We appreciate the councilmember's willingness for open dialogue and for sharing her vision for the bill. I look forward to continuing the conversation on this legislation with Councilmember Sanchez, council staff, and our colleagues at City Hall. Furthermore, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that individuals 12 or older can receive low-to-no-cost services at any of our sexual health clinics across the city, all of which offer STI testing, included rapid HIV testing. We also have two STI Quickie Express clinics, one located in Chelsea, one at Fort Greene, that currently offers rapid chlamydia and gonorrhea testing with PCR confirmatory results within hours. The New York City Health Department also funds numerous agencies across New York City to offer routine STI testing, included rapid HIV testing, in clinical and non-clinical setting. New Yorkers can also consult the New York City Health Map to find sexual health services. We ask for the city's council's support in reaching your constituents to let them know about the STI testing resources available to them. Thank you for your time and attention. We're always willing to discuss your legislative proposals and encourage you to reach out to our Legislative Affairs Team and City Hall to do so.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a couple of questions, and then I'm going to ask my colleagues, particularly Councilmember Sanchez, to ask some as well, and anybody else who has. So in February, DOHMH released its 2022 Sexually Transmitted Infections Surveillance Report. Can you please share the key findings from this report, specifically the rates of chlamydia and gonorrhea in women versus men in the neighborhoods with the highest STR case rates-- STI, sorry?
Sure. STIs reported to the New York City Health Department continued to increase and remained a public health concern in 2022. The department observed increase in chlamydia and gonorrhea rates in 2022 compared with 2021. After reduced levels of STI screenings during the first two years of the COVID-19 pandemic, improved access to and increased use of sexual health services likely contributed to increased detection of STIs in 2022. 2022 New York City was also impacted by the outbreak of MPOCs, which was predominantly transmitted through sexual contact and likely led to increases in sexual health care seeking and screening for other STIs. Inequities persisted among people with reported cases of chlamydia, gonorrhea, and syphilis, underscoring the need to improve access to timely, high-quality sexual health services for all New Yorkers. From 2021 to 2022, the chlamydia rate among men increased by 5.2%, and the rate among women increased by 1%. In recent years, chlamydia cases rates among men have increased to levels that are comparable to those among women in New York City. From 2021 to 2022, the gonorrhea rate among men in New York City increased by 10.5%, whereas the rate among women decreased by 15.2%. 2022 chlamydia and gonorrhea disproportionately affected people living in very high-poverty neighborhoods, greater than 30% of the population below federal poverty level in New York City, with case-- with case rates approximately two times higher than rates among people living in low-poverty neighborhoods.
When-- Thank you. When you get a chance, can you tell us the neighborhoods? If you don't have them here, if you can get back to us with the specific neighborhoods?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Are there differences between the services provided by DOHMH Sexual Health Express Clinics versus the Sexual Health Clinics?
Yes, there are differences. Our Sexual Health Clinics provide full services, and we have Express and non-- and non-Express. And the difference between that is our Express Quickie, which we currently have at Chelsea and Fort Greene, it has a cycle time of less than 15 minutes. So individuals are coming in, non-symptomatic, they're being screened, they're being assessed at that triage. If they do define that they are symptomatic, our Express Clinics are co-located with our clinician visits as well, so we're able to get them to the sites if they need further testing. But if they are symptomatic, they are screened. We do have instruments onsite at Chelsea and Fort Greene that does the PCR confirmatory testing onsite. They get those results within hours, comparable to the sites where necessarily are not operating the instruments. They'll get those results within two to three days. That also helps us also treat same-day. Many times, individuals receive results via patient portal, so they come early enough, they'll get results same day, and they'll get treated same day. So it has helped us cut the time of treat from eight days to one to two days. So it's really making an impact on the battle against STIs.
That's really great. Appreciate it. Currently, how many Sexual Health Express Clinics are in operation across the city, including both city-run and non-city-run facilities?
So we currently have six Sexual Health Clinics operating, six of the eight are operating. We have two of the Quickie Clinics that are operating, and then we have our Sexual Health Map that provides access for all sites that are providing STI testing. There's about 770 that are on the Sexual Health--
Does the administration support proposed Introduction 435A?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Schulman. Of-- of Quickie-- were there any Quickie lab-- or, sorry-- a Quickie sites that were closed or repurposed during COVID that remain closed to sexual-- to STI testing?
So pre-COVID, we only had one STI Quickie location in Chelsea. During COVID, we were able to build out nine new labs to support PCR confirmatory for COVID. Those same instruments could be pivoted to do STI Quickie testing. So since COVID, we've pivoted Fort Greene, so we currently have two locations that are operating.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you so much. That's helpful. And what do you think the impact will be of implementing Intro 435?
I think it would improve access across New York City. I think it would help us further engage the community on that access with our partners, but most importantly, being able to expand and open additional Quickie locations to be able to see individuals that are asymptomatic interested in testing with a quick turnaround. We're in New York. People want things fast, and-- but, you know, the ability not to just provide a fast service, but to also to provide a confirmatory results for that fast service, I think will be making an impact.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Assistant Commissioner, and I also want to shout out Deputy Mayor Isom and Commissioner Hassan for their help and all the conversations that got us here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Counsel-- Any other councilmembers have questions? Mamorato?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Schulman. So I just wanted to ask you, how long has this technology existed, and what are the accuracy rates?
The-- the technology and the instruments we use are the CFIOT instruments. They've been around for numerous years. Not-- not sure if you're aware, with Dean Street Express in London, it was probably one of the first ones to launch the Quickie model utilized in these instruments a few years ago. I don't know exactly when-- when they were launched, but we can get back that information on you. These-- these instruments also have the ability to do other testing platforms as well, and they continue to work on adding more reagents to the instruments as well.
Okay. And if you don't live in these specific areas or neighborhoods, and you have people coming from, like, outside, say, like Westchester or, you know, the east side of the Bronx, you know, would you be able to accommodate all of these people, these individuals that show up for testing?
Yeah. We've been-- you know, our doors are open regardless of insurance status, immigration status, where you're coming. We're here to serve the public and, you know, to connect you for ongoing care as well throughout that process.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Noasis, you have--
All we talk about is inequities in all aspects, and how to address the inequities in New York City. What specific barriers do individuals currently face in accessing fertility treatment due to limited insurance coverage, which we know--
Councilmember, we're doing the STI-- our STI bill now.
I'm so far away from there. Sorry.
Different--
Guys, my question's for the--
Okay. So-- so there are no other questions for this-- for the Assistant Commissioner? Okay. So Assistant Commissioner, I want to thank you, and, you know, we want to thank the Commissioner and the Deputy Mayor as well for being partners with us on all kinds of health care issues, so we much appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I apologize, Commissioner, because being in traffic for so long in New York City can get you upside down, and I'm trying to reset. I'm trying to reset. It's just, like, not easy. I'm so upset to not be on time, and I love being on time. Sorry. I appreciate your time.
Well, we're switching gears. I want to acknowledge that we've been joined virtually by Councilmember Ariola.
Can you call?
OLR, would you-- Okay. I'm going to ask the Committee Council to administer the oath to the administration.
Good morning. Just ensure that your microphone is on. Please raise your right hand. In accordance with the rules of the council, I will administer the affirmation to the witnesses from the mayoral administration. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee, and to respond honestly to councilmember questions?
Yes.
You may proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Schulman, members of the Health Committee. I'm Daniel Pollock, First Deputy Commissioner at the Office of Labor Relations. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm here to discuss Intro 718, which would require the city to establish family-building benefits for city employees intended to cover some or all of the costs of assisted reproduction and adoption for city employees that are not otherwise covered by the city's health plan. Before discussing our perspective regarding this legislation, I would like to take the opportunity to summarize our current coverage in this area. For context, the city spends over $11 billion a year for health benefits for its employees, dependents, and retirees. To put the size of that expense into context, it's approximately 10% of the entire city budget of $114 billion. As with all employers, we continue to incur increase in costs in providing health benefits due to increases in hospital costs, the cost of prescription drugs, and new state mandates. Union welfare funds, which provide benefits such as dental, vision, and prescription drugs, face the same pressures. Our goal in partnership with our city unions is always to provide high-quality health insurance to our employees, and we are constantly working to maintain the high-quality benefits we provide while containing the increase in costs. Our health plan provides numerous fertility benefits to eligible individuals. This includes fertility treatments such as genetic screening, semen analysis, ovulation induction and monitoring, intrauterine insemination, known as IUI, and up to three cycles of in vitro fertilization, IVF. We believe that our fertility benefits are strong, and we currently spend over $50 million a year on fertility benefits for our employees and other covered individuals. For the city's largest plan, the CBP Plan, we utilize WIN Fertility for management of fertility benefits. In addition to providing authorizations for fertility treatment, WIN provides case management and support to families with infertility issues. Members receive information about infertility causes, testing, and different treatment and medication options. WIN Fertility also provides a personalized care plan with treatment recommendations, including access to reproductive behavioral health support and nutrition coaching as needed. Additionally, WIN Fertility provides 24/7 access to their nurse care advocates, who can answer questions, help find doctors, and talk through patient concerns. Other services provided by WIN include preapprovals for fertility-related prescription medication, as well as help managing and taking those medications, and guidance through the fertility preservation process, including help finding in-network egg freezing facilities. I want to speak in more detail specifically about our IVF coverage and eligibility requirements. Individuals may be eligible for IVF coverage if they're diagnosed with infertility, as defined by state rules and regulations. An individual may also be eligible for IVF coverage if they're unable to conceive due to their sexual orientation or gender identity, without having to confirm an infertility diagnosis. This has been the case since at least 2021, when the State Department of Financial Services issued guidance regarding the issue. So I want to be clear, since I know there is, you know, confusion in this area, gay males who are covered by the city health plan are eligible for IVF benefits and do not need to establish a diagnosis of infertility to be eligible for those benefits. Once eligibility is established, all city employees and dependents are eligible for the same benefits regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. For those who require donor oocytes or-- and/or sperm, that includes costs associated with the fertilization of a donor oocyte and/or with the use of donor sperm, including preparation of the oocyte or sperm, fertilization and culture of embryos, genetic testing of embryos if medically necessary, cryopreservation of embryos or sperm, thawing of embryos or sperm, and preparation of an embryo for transfer. It should also be noted that age restrictions are not permitted for covered infertility services. However, treatments and procedures on an individual who is not an employee, non-medicare retiree, or dependent enrolled in city health insurance benefits are not covered. So that includes the cost of treatment associated with oocyte retrieval from a donor, sperm donation, and the cost of embryo transfer to a surrogate or gestational carrier. Costs associated with procurement of donor material and gestational carrier or surrogate compensation are also not covered by our health plan. Again, this is true regardless of sexual orientation. Gay individuals or couples-- Gay individuals or couples are eligible for the same benefits as heterosexual couples who require the use of donor oocytes or sperm and/or a surrogate or gestational carrier. I understand the scope of coverage and benefits in this area can be confusing, so we recently updated the summary plan description posted on O L R's website to provide greater clarity. And we are working with WIN Fertility to explore other ways to educate our covered members on these benefits, such as webinars and videos. I now want to speak for a moment on intro seven eighteen, which would require the city to cover some or all of the costs associated with assisted reproduction and adoption for its employees. While we appreciate the intent behind this introduction, these benefits, like other health benefits and fringe benefits, are mandatory subjects of collective bargaining under Article fourteen of the New York State Civil Service Law, also known as the Taylor Law, which means these benefits cannot be created by local law. While we are open to continue exploring ways to address this critical issue, we believe benefits and compensation should and legally must be negotiated through collective bargaining with our municipal unions. And indeed, we've historically found that the city and its unions, working together, can and do negotiate improvements in employee benefits in a way that is best suited to the needs of unions and their members. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. The Office of Labor Relations strongly believes that all city employees deserve high-quality and equitable health care. As we have for many years, we will continue to work with our municipal unions to make appropriate modifications and enhancements to our health plan in the best interests of employees and taxpayers. I will be happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. How much does the city currently spend per year on family building benefits for city employees such as fertility treatments?
So looking at the last two years, we've spent in each year over fifty million dollars a year approximately. And that includes both the cost of medical claims as well as the cost of prescription drugs for fertility.
Out of the total number of city employees who are on the city's health insurance plan, how many or what percentage of employees this year or last year had used or are currently using the IVF infertility preservation benefits?
So, Dan, looking at the the last two years, and we're looking at April through March of each year, so twenty-two to twenty-three and twenty-three to twenty-four, and each year it was over three thousand members.
How much would the cost to the city increase if IVF coverage was expanded to cover treatments associated with egg retrieval from a donor, sperm donation, an embryo transfer to a surrogate, or gestational carrier?
So in answering that question, I first want to note that those kinds of benefits wouldn't be covered under our health plan because they're treatments or procedures on a non-insured individual.
For anyone or just for? For for gay, for hetero, I mean, for anyone or?
For anyone who's not, if it's a procedure or treatment on someone who's not actually covered by our insurance plan, so not a dependent, non-employee, not a pre-Medicare retiree, it would not be covered. So in the case of a donor or a surrogate or gestational carrier, that wouldn't be under our health plan. You know, so if there were a separate benefit, like a reimbursement benefit, which, you know, I'd want to note, it wouldn't be covered by our health plan. It would likely be a taxable reimbursement benefit. In terms of the how much the cost would be, it's hard to estimate how many city employees would utilize this. And also, it kind of depends on the scope of the benefit. There are a lot of different services that can be covered. You know, there's donation, there's surrogacy, there's, you know, adoption is referenced in the bill as well. There's voluntary egg freezing. There are a whole host of benefits. And then, of course, it depends on the amount of the benefit. So, you know, my understanding, where these kinds of benefits are provided, there is almost always a cap because unfortunately, the cost of these these procedures and these benefits can be extraordinarily high. So, you know, it really depends on on what the the benefit is. I can give you a sense of what the cost of some of these procedures are. I think you, Chair, mentioned them already in in your opening. But, you know, an IVF cycle for egg retrieval, in the case of a donor egg, would cost ten, anywhere from ten to thirty thousand dollars for for each cycle. The cost of procuring frozen donor eggs is fifteen to twenty thousand dollars generally. Frozen semen samples can cost anywhere from one to three thousand dollars, sometimes even more, depending on the the kind of type of options you want to avail yourself of. That doesn't include the costs of donor or surrogate compensation, agency fees, which sometimes exist. You know, these can be extraordinarily expensive benefits.
So introduction seven eighteen was last heard in June of twenty twenty-two. At that hearing, O L R testified that you strongly believe that all city employees deserve high-quality and equitable health care. Is this still the city's position? And if so, can you please describe how current coverage for family building benefits ensures that all employees, including those that are in non-heterosexual relationships, have equal access to high-quality care to help build their families?
Thank you for the question, Chair Schulman. Yes, we continue to believe that all city employees should have equitable access to treatment. We, as I mentioned in my testimony, our insurance coverage provides the same benefits for all individuals, regardless of sexual orientation. You know, the, I had some of the issues come up when you're talking about requiring the use of a donor or a gestational carrier, and that's the same regardless of sexual orientation. If you have a heterosexual individual or couple who requires those services, those are not covered, the same as they are for, and the same is true for a gay couple or individual.
Is this coverage more robust than previous city health insurance plans? If yes, please describe the services that are now covered that were not previously.
So I'm not sure I have a complete, I don't have a complete list of that. We can get back to you. You know, obviously, treatments always evolve over time. We continue to cover kind of all medically necessary fertility treatments that are, you know, indicated and as mandated by the state coverage. You know, I could debat you with a list of how our coverage has changed over time.
You mentioned in your testimony that the cost of health care is going up, right? So do you have a record of who's applied for these benefits and whether they've been denied or provided? Because I assume you have to keep some kind of record to see where costs are going up or?
Yes. So, you know, in terms of the way the process works for fertility benefits is authorization, as I mentioned, is done by WIN Fertility, which specializes in these kinds of infertility benefits. So WIN would have records of every time someone sought insurance coverage for fertility treatments.
And WIN works through you, right, through?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So can you go back to them and get those numbers for us to see?
I, yes, Chair Schulman will. And the number specifically you're asking for is the number of denials for these services?
Denials and what also has been provided, both that have been approved and not approved? And if there's a breakdown of whether they're heterosexual, non-heterosexual couples or individuals?
Yes, we will work to get that information for the council.
Does the city support a family benefits program that assists all types of families in becoming parents, whether through adoption, IVF, surrogacy, or other methods of family building? And if so, how is the city helping city employees and their families access these services?
So I would say that, you know, we always want to support our employees in in raising families and having children. You know, we believe that any establishment of new benefits has to occur through the collective bargaining process. You know, there's always, the collective bargaining process is about weighing different priorities and, you know, making determinations as to what's best suited to the the union bargaining those benefits. And, you know, we think any new benefits really have to come through that process. So, you know, we completely support every effort to to support city employees in building families. But we think anything that, you know, leads to those benefits has to come through the collective bargaining process.
The State Department of Finance issued guidance in twenty twenty-one clarifying that individuals may also be eligible for IVF coverage if they are unable to conceive due to their sexual orientation or gender identity. O L R stated in a letter yesterday and in your testimony today that this guidance is being followed. As a result of this guidance, has there been an increase in use of IVF benefits by city employees? And if so, by how much?
So we only have our data from the last couple of years. We will, we can go back and get the the data prior to twenty twenty-one and update you.
And is O L R monitoring for denials of coverage and violation of this guidance? If so, what actions are being taken to ensure that these denials are reversed and that insurers adhere to the state's guidance? And I'm asking this because while you're saying that non-heterosexual couples are not being discriminated against, in practice, that may not be the case. So how are you monitoring that?
So, you know, we've spent all our insurers and insurance vendors to comply with state law. We have had conversations with our carriers and with WIN Fertility on this issue. They they are processing, they've told us they're they're processing authorizations in accordance with that state law. They have a process in place to approve claims or approve treatments where the it's indicated the member cannot conceive due to their sexual orientation. We don't have a specific audit of our fertility benefits in place to, you know, analyze each authorization and and what happened.
Do you think you should have one in place?
So, you know, obviously, with with authorization generally, you know, we we do certain audits, and I can't speak right now to the scope of all those audits. But, you know, there are thousands, tens of thousands, probably hundreds of thousands authorizations we do every year for insurance coverage. You know, I think the practicality of doing a large-scale audit is is challenging, but we can certainly look into it. I understand the question and the the intent behind it, so we'll we'll debat you on the feasibility.
I mean, it's a good practice anyway to see, because healthcare is is one of the most important things that, you know, that we can rely on. And and plus the fact that, you know, the mayor has launched Healthy NYC to extend life expectancy and and to make sure that people live healthier and lives and have a higher higher well-being. And so, you know, this plays into that.
Yes, we will certainly look into that. I appreciate that.
Before I ask my next question, I want to recognize we've been joined by Councilmember De La Rosa, Councilmember Feliz, and Councilmember Shu Wang. The city's current health benefits program states that a city employee may still be eligible for IVF coverage if they are unable to conceive due to their sexual orientation or gender identity. Can you please elaborate on the statement and what it means for LGBTQIA+ individuals seeking coverage for family building services?
Sure. So, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the there are multiple ways to qualify for fertility benefits. One is by a diagnosis of infertility, but for individuals or couples who can't conceive due to their sexual orientation, they do not need to prove infertility. Just by virtue of that sexual orientation, they are eligible for fertility, certain fertility benefits. So in the case of a gay male couple, for example, they would immediately be eligible for some of the services I mentioned, such as fertilization and culture of embryos, preparation of sperm for fertilization of a donor oocyte, as well as, you know, potentially testing, genetic testing of the sperm or embryo. In the case of a gay female employer couple, they would immediately be eligible for to undergo intrauterine insemination, which would be the first step before any IVF coverage.
Under the letter of state law, IVF coverage is only possible if a city employee, non-Medicare retiree, or their dependents receive a diagnosis of infertility, which is defined by state law and has been interpreted, possibly even after twenty twenty-one, to effectively exclude gay men and other individuals from receiving such diagnosis and therefore receiving any coverage for IVF. IVF procedures on any individual who's not an employee, non-Medicare retiree, or dependent are not covered, including surrogates. But for gay men and their partners, IVF, egg retrieval, embryo creation, and surrogacy are the only ways they are able to conceive. In other words, biologically, gay men and their partners cannot receive an infertility diagnosis and therefore cannot receive any coverage for IVF. Is it O L R's stated position today that an infertility diagnosis is not required? I know you've said it, but I'm asking again. An infertility diagnosis is not required to obtain to obtain coverage, but clearly, some gaps remain and is unclear to what extent care for a gay male couple, for example, would be covered as compared to a heterosexual couple. How does the city plan to address any remaining gaps in coverage for such individuals, considering its position that all city employees deserve high-quality and equitable health care? Sorry, it's a long question.
No problem, Council, Chair Schulman. So we, it is our position that we do not require a diagnosis of infertility for gay individuals or couples to be eligible for fertility benefits.
Okay. Last year, the American Society for Reproductive Medicine updated its definition of infertility to include anyone needing medical intervention, including, but not limited to, the use of donor gametes or donor embryos to achieve a successful pregnancy, either as an individual or with a partner. Do you believe that this definition is more inclusive of the various types of individuals and families wishing to start a family?
So I think the the result, just from hearing that, obviously, I'm right, the the result is the same, that a gay individual or couple or or anyone who really requiring the use of donor material, oocytes, or sperm is eligible for for coverage. What they're eligible for is, you know, the the treatments I described. Where they're not eligible is for the the procurement of the donor material.
Is, so you've mentioned the Taylor Law and collective bargaining a few times. So is it O L R's position that benefits for non-union employees can be established by local law?
So that's a legal question that I I don't believe we have a position on at the time. Would have to get back to the council on that. You know, certainly, it's it's not a Taylor Law issue, but there may be other issues.
What what assistance do employees get if they want to adopt and are not interested in fertility treatments?
The city doesn't have any adoption benefits at this time.
What funding sources would be used for this for intro seven eighteen if it were to go into effect?
So, you know, if if intro seven eighteen, you know, were passed and it applied citywide, there would obviously need to be funding for for the for the new benefit. It's, it would could be a costly benefit, and it would add to the city's costs. It probably wouldn't be cost under the health insurance plan, as I mentioned. It would be a new benefit that would essentially be another form of compensation to employees who submit for reimbursement.
Are there any financial aid packages for city employees that require reproductive health care services?
None that I'm aware of.
I'm going to leave it up to my colleagues who we? Councilmember Narcisse?
Thank you. Now, I I'm kind of awake a little bit, not upset anymore. Intro of seven one eight. How much does the city currently spend per year on family building benefit for city employees such as fertility treatment?
The city currently spends over fifty million dollars a year on those benefits.
How much?
Over fifty, five zero.
Five zero. Out of the total number of the city employees who are the city, the city's health insurance plan, how much of what percentage of employees this year of last year had used or are currently using the IVF and fertility preservation benefits?
So the the number there is over three thousand per year. And if you want a percentage, that's, you know, we have over a million covered lives in our health insurance program, so it's probably in the neighborhood of, you know, three percent, maybe a little bit less. And that includes dependents and pre-Medicare retirees, not just employees.
How much would the cost to the city increase if IVF coverage was expanded to cover treatments associated with egg retrieval from a donor sperm donation, an embryo transfer to a surrogate or gestational carrier?
So the the cost of that is difficult to estimate because we don't know either the uptake or the extent of the benefit. Benefits like that, as I mentioned to Chair Schulman, is often tapped when there's a reimbursement. When I, when these benefits are provided by employers, there's often a tap on reimbursement. So it really depends on that because these can be very, very expensive benefits.
It's very expensive.
Yes.
How much would the cost? No, I'm leaving that one. I have another question that I was trying to face with that. What impact do you anticipate those family building benefits would have on employee satisfaction, retention, and overall workforce place, I mean, workforce moral? Sorry.
So, you know, if there were greater, you know, greater benefits provided in this area or new benefits, certainly, the people who receive benefits from it would, I assume, be happier. They would they would appreciate that. You know, it's hard to say, again, how many people would benefit from from this coverage. We don't have an estimate, so it's hard to gauge really what the impact would be, you know.
So if you estimate?
I apologize. I don't think I can provide?
You don't want to talk numbers?
I don't really know how many people would are seeking this kind of benefit and would? Obtain it.
So how often does O L R, I mean, O L R, review and update benefits to ensure they continue to? to meet the evolving needs of the city employees?
So, it's a constant effort. We're always looking at our benefits and what we provide. We have, I would say, you know, we have staff who are dedicated solely to this task of looking at our health insurance coverage and plans and seeing what's happening on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis, and we also have monthly meetings with the municipal labor committee to oversee our health plan, along with consultants, expert consultants in the healthcare field that both we and the municipal labor committee hire. So, it's a constant effort. I would say it's not, it's not, you know, every once in a while, it's every day, every week, every month that we're looking at these things.
Okay. Last question. How much would the cost of, to the city increase if IVF coverage was expanded to cover costs associated with the procurement of donors, oocytes, I mean, sperms, embryos, and gestational carriers or surrogate?
So, again, I think that would depend on kind of the scale of the benefit. If you're covering the full cost of the services, it could be extraordinarily expensive. You know, as I mentioned, the cost of donor eggs can be $20,000 per, you know, round.
Twenty thousand?
Twenty thousand dollars. The cost of donor semen can be $1,000 to $3,000. The cost of surrogacy, you know, it really, there are various things you could cover. There's the embryo transfer to a surrogate, which is probably the least expensive of everything. There's also, obviously, the cost of the pregnancy, which, if it's not covered for some reason by the surrogate's own insurance, which it should be, but if it's not, that could be very expensive. And then there is compensation. Donors, as well as surrogates, are usually compensated, and sometimes there's an agency fee as well, because there's an agency involved in this, and those fees can really get very high.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Mamarado?
Thank you. So, having a child is a big responsibility. It's not an overnight decision, and we should by no means deter any city employee from that opportunity. It's been 45 years since a life was created through IVF, and times have changed, and we need to stay current with those times. And it's, it's like disheartening to me to hear that you're really not considering it, and it really comes down to bottom line and dollar amount. I mean, you really need to, like, Councilmember Narcisse asked a lot of the questions that I wanted to know, but it's like you really don't have the information that you should have. You should kind of figure out how many employees would benefit, how many employees are going to look to have these treatments who can't naturally have children themselves. You need to do some kind of study or outreach to the employees because it's important. I mean, how much more money? If you're spending 50 million a year for 3,000 people, that's really not a lot of money. It sounds like only one or two IVF or implantations can be done per person, and it doesn't sound like a lot of money. So, even if you give that opportunity to our employees just, just once, it would be huge. So, is there any way you could possibly go out, do the, do like outreach to our employees?
So, thank you, Councilmember. We, I do appreciate the question and the thought. We will certainly explore that. We are, you know, by no means saying that, you know, we don't understand the import of benefits like this and the values it can bring to employees, and we will continue to talk about it and to look at these issues. So, we will look at that.
And these are like contributing members to society, you know? They're paying into their benefits. It's not like it's, it's free, so they should be allowed to have the opportunity.
Yeah. I appreciate that, Councilmember. And yes, you know, we obviously, we want to support our employees. Obviously, you know, there are always limitations to what we can provide, but we do want to support our employees, and we will continue to look at these issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ressler?
Great. Thank you so much, Chair Schulman, and I really deeply appreciate your leadership on this issue, the thoughtful legislation that you've introduced, and your vocal advocacy. Nicholas Magapinto and Corey Briskin live in my council district. I have been inspired by their advocacy in litigation to guarantee access to IVF to all New York City employees. It's good to see you, Deputy Commissioner Pollak. So, just to make sure I understand, any hetero couple that works for the City of New York that qualifies for IVF, that would be covered by their insurance?
Good to see you too, Councilmember Ressler. A heterosexual couple who either meets, who meets the definition of infertility under state law would be covered for IVF benefits. That's correct.
And a lesbian couple that meets the infertility determination under state law, works for the City of New York, either partner would be qualified, would qualify for IVF, correct?
Not exactly. The female, same-sex female individual or couple would not need to prove an infertility diagnosis, first of all, and initially, they would qualify for IUI, intrauterine insemination. They would have to take that step before qualifying for IVF coverage. If they're unable to conceive IUI, then they would qualify for IVF coverage.
But, so, it's only a gay male couple that would be in this situation, that they'd be ineligible, unable to access this way of getting pregnant and having a family with support and coverage from the City of New York?
Respectfully, Councilmember, I don't think that's correct. Gay male couples are eligible for IVF benefits. They're eligible without having a proven infertility diagnosis. The benefits they're eligible for include fertility treatments, testing of sperm and embryos, fertilization and culture of embryos, storage costs for frozen embryos if necessary, and other related treatments. It's the same, it's that same coverage a heterosexual individual or couple who requires the use of donor material or a gestational carrier would be entitled for. There's no difference at all. It's really about the services that are performed on, that are performed on a non-insured individual. So, you know, in each of those cases, a heterosexual couple who requires donor material or a gay couple, if you need donor material, that cost is not covered, because that's a service or a treatment on a non-insured individual.
But aren't we being a little cute? I mean, the inherently, for the hetero couple or lesbian couple, they are going to be insured. It's only the gay male couple that needs a non-insured third party to assist them in having this baby that would need that coverage and support. So, to say that it's the exact same coverage is not true, right? I mean, there's a clear distinction here that gay couples are being discriminated against versus the resources that every other couple has access to to be able to have a child.
Respectfully, I just don't agree with that, Councilmember. There are many heterosexual individuals who require the use of donor materials, who are unable to provide eggs or sperm or require the use of a gestational carrier. It's, you know, probably more common than I wish it was in the world, and they have access to the exact same benefits. In terms of a same-sex female couple, they would require the use of donor sperm, and that would not be covered. So, it's not just homosexual males who face this issue, and this is really related to, essentially, what health insurance plans cover. Health insurance plans covered insured individuals. Any kind of cost of donor, for procuring donor materials for gestational carriers, that's really outside the health insurance plan.
And do you believe that local legislation to guarantee IVF coverage for gay couples would be preempted by the Taylor Law? For all city employees, if that was the, if that was the law that we tried to implement?
I believe that legislation that relates to health benefits for city employees is preempted by the Taylor Law, that that has to be bargained.
All city employees?
In the case, legislation that seeks to impose benefits on all city employees must be bargained.
What about non-union, what about managerial employees?
So, managerial employees, it wouldn't be a Taylor Law issue. There may be other legal issues with that.
What would the other legal issues be?
I can't speak to that right now. I would have to get back to the council on that, but that's obviously not a Taylor Law issue.
Right. So, just as another thought for a way to navigate this, and could you also enlighten us, in recent years, the previous administration expanded health-related benefits for managerial employees before they were collectively bargained? Is that right?
I'm sorry, could you be more specific, which health benefits?
Paid, for paid family leave?
Oh, paid parental leave, yes.
Paid parental leave? Could you elaborate?
Sure. So, paid parental leave was established for non-union employees by, so, you know, taking a step back, as a general matter, we don't like to provide better benefits or better total compensation to our non-union employees and to our unionized employees for reasons that I think, you know, everyone understands. So, if a new benefit is going to be provided to managerial employees, it has to be, you know, funded in some way out of the existing package or out of a collective bargaining or wage increase package that typically managers, non-union employees, receive after unionized employees have settled for around a bargaining. So, in, I think it was 2017 or 2018, the last administration created a six-week paid parental leave benefit for non-union employees by canceling 0.47% wage increase that was due to be paid to these employees, as well as reducing the vacation accrual for the most senior managerial employees.
And subsequent to that, it has been incorporated into most labor agreements? All labor agreements?
It has, it's varied. So, that particular benefit, full paid family leave, really only exists for a couple of the unions, the United Federation of Teachers and council supervisors and administrators. Other unions have opted into the state paid family leave program, which is obviously a different program and funded through an employee payroll deduction, and, you know, there are, I think, over 100,000 city employees who have not elected to take either option, their unions.
But as a result of this step being taken on the administrative level for managerial employees, we've now seen well over 100,000 unionized workers also receive this benefit in collective bargaining, and more than a third of the city workforce is benefiting from this.
I don't know if I would say it's because of. I think at the time, there was generally a movement to, you know, seek this benefit for city employees, but certainly, there are now over 200,000 city employees that have benefit to some paid leave program.
Great. Well, I appreciate your answers to the questions, and thank you, Chair Schulman, for giving me the chance to ask a couple today.
I have one last question. I want to clarify, how does your testimony square with Administrative Code 12-126, which imposes a requirement for health benefits for all city employees?
So, 12-126 relates to the obligation to cover the cost of health, of a health insurance plan, you know, up to the cost of the hip HMO rate. That is really about the obligation to cover the cost of a plan. We cover the cost of health insurance in accordance with that statute. You know, it doesn't mandate what's in a health insurance plan.
The last thing that I want to say here is that we, the city, just in general, the city provides coverage to people, the regular, not necessarily employees, but regular people, regardless of their immigration status, right, regardless of their ability to pay. And so, the city should be providing its employees with care regardless of who they love, so I just want to put that on the record, and want to thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Chair Schulman.
We've been joined by Councilmember Gennaro and Councilmember Menon virtually.
Thank you.
I want to remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding, and the quorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on the legislation being considered today, proposed Introduction 435A, Introduction 718, or Proposed Resolution 165A. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and/or video recordings will not be accepted. So, I want to call on Corey Briskin.
And can you say, um, five minutes for Corey?
And five minutes, you have five minutes. Oh, there's no oath for them? Sorry. It's only for the admin. Go ahead, sorry.
Is this on already?
Yeah, it's on.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Schulman and other members of the council. Thank you for inviting me to testify in support of the legislation you've introduced to ensure that all city employees can receive family-building benefits like IVF. And thank you for standing with me, my husband, Nicholas Magapinto, and other gay male city employees who are asking the city to treat us equally by offering gay male city employees the same IVF benefits that other employees now receive. For most city employees who earn modest salaries, it's impossible to grow their families through IVF without IVF coverage under the city's health plan. That's true whether they are in a same-sex couple, a different-sex couple, or single. Now, today is the first time I've testified in the city council, but it's not the first time that I've spoken on behalf of the people of this city. From 2017 through 2022, I served as an Assistant District Attorney in Manhattan, just a few blocks from here, enforcing the law and helping to keep residents of New York City safe. As a gay man, I chose to live and work in New York City because of its long history of supporting the rights of gay men and other LGBTQ people. For instance, in 1986, the city council prohibited sexual orientation discrimination in New York City workplaces, making it clear that gay workers must receive the same opportunities and benefits as all other workers. And in 2020, New York's legislature required health plans with over 100 employees to cover three IVF cycles for every plan participant, and said that IVF access can't be denied based on sex or sexual orientation. Because of these strong protections for LGBTQ workers, when my husband and I decided to expand our family with biological children, we assumed that we'd have the same access to IVF benefits as other city employees through the city's health plan. But sadly, we were mistaken. Although IVF is the only feasible way for gay men to grow their families biologically, we were shocked and dismayed to learn that the city's health plan categorically excludes gay men from receiving the IVF benefits that the city offers to women in different-sex relationships, women in same-sex relationships, and single women. The city's health plan does this by providing IVF benefits only to employees and their covered spouses who meet an outdated definition of infertility, namely, the inability to conceive a child through male-female unprotected intercourse for a year or through intrauterine insemination. Because we, as gay men, can't meet this definition of infertility, we don't qualify for the valuable IVF benefits that other city employees are eligible to receive, including the retrieval and fertilization of eggs. Now, today, Deputy Commissioner Pollak represented to this council on behalf of OLR that the city provides certain fertility benefits without requiring a diagnosis of infertility. He said that multiple times. This is inconsistent with what OLR has previously told us and the EEOC, inconsistent with what is written in the city's health plan documents, and frankly, inconsistent with our own lived experience. Indeed, in 2021, my husband and I were told by the city that we were not eligible for any IVF coverage under the city's health plan. We were stunned and disappointed that the city would refuse to offer IVF benefits to gay men, and due to this discriminatory policy, we were forced to delay having children for years because we could not afford the cost of IVF. As a prosecutor tasked with enforcing the law, I found it particularly troubling that the city was denying me and my husband equal protection under the law on the basis of our sex and sexual orientation, and I knew that I could not stand idly by. So, in April 2022, my husband and I filed a discrimination charge with the EEOC and asked Mayor Adams to change the city's policy to allow gay men to qualify for IVF benefits. Although Mayor Adams did not institute this policy, it's still his duty to ensure that the city complies with federal, state, and local laws that prohibit this type of discrimination. Because Mayor Adams refused to change the city's policy, my husband and I were forced to file a class-action lawsuit against the city in May 2024. In that lawsuit, we are seeking justice for ourselves and for hundreds or possibly thousands of other gay male employees and their partners who have been wrongfully denied IVF access. And we describe how the city's policy unlawfully discriminates against gay men based on their sex and sexual orientation in violation of federal, state, and local anti-discrimination laws and the federal and state constitutions. We're seeking two types of rel- We're seeking two types of relief in the lawsuit. First, we ask the city to reform its policy so that gay men can receive IVF benefits under its health plan. The city can do this by implementing the modern definition of infertility that the American Society of Reproductive Medicine has adopted. I'm almost finished. Second, the city must make whole the gay male employees and their partners who have been denied IVF benefits in the past. I'm joined today by our counsel in this case, Peter Romer Friedman to my left, and Rutgers Law Professor David Lopez also to my left, who previously served as the EEOC's General Counsel. We are available to answer any questions that you have. We hope that the mayor and OLR will act on our requests now and make the city a leader on this issue. But if they won't, it's up to this counsel to ensure that all city employees and their partners have equal access to family-building benefits like IVF, even if they can't satisfy the city's discriminatory definition of infertility. Bill Number 718, sponsored by Chair Schulman, my own councilmember Lincoln Ressler, and others, is a critical first step towards ensuring that all employees can receive the IVF benefits we need to build our families. Thank you.
Okay, I have some questions.
Sure.
One is in 20, well, let me step back a minute. First of all, I want to commend you and your husband for wanting to build a family and the efforts that you're making. So, we're going to try to do what we can to be helpful there.
Appreciate that.
And when you said that in 2021, that you and your husband were told by OLR that you weren't eligible, was that in writing?
It was.
Is that possible for us to get a copy of that?
We'd be happy to provide that. And in fact, Chair Schulman, the particular medical codes or procedure codes were provided to OLR, and the response that Mr. Briskin received was that they weren't covered for them, because they were gay.
You heard the testimony today, infertility is not required. He specifically said that. So, I'm just noting that for the record.
It's very surprising, particularly because as of December of last year, according to a Freedom of Information Act request that we made to the EEOC, Dean Waltman from the Office of Labor Relations told the EEOC that employees must meet an infertility diagnosis in order to receive coverage under the health plan that Corey Briskin.
Whatever you could submit to us would be helpful.
Happy to provide that as well, Chair.
How is the state's 2021 guidance on coverage insufficient from your perspective?
I don't, I don't know if the 2021 guidance from the state is insufficient. I think what's insufficient is how it's been implemented by the city and its health plan. The health plan itself and the summary plan description talks about the infertility standard being necessary to qualify for coverage and essentially leaves a gap for gay men. It talks about for heterosexual couples, 12 months of unprotected sex without conceiving, or for lesbian women, six months of IUI gets coverage, but there's no route for gay men.
Is it your position that the city is not adhering to the state's guidance?
100%.
How would Intro 718 ensure coverage?
Chair, our understanding, Chair, is that your bill would provide an additional opportunity for gay men and other city employees and their spouses who can't satisfy the city's outdated, archaic discriminatory definition of infertility to get the type of coverage that's not available to them now. So, essentially, it would supplement that. We, of course, think it's necessary and required by federal law that would supersede the Taylor Law or any state or local law that requires equal benefits in a nondiscriminatory way to be provided. At the same time, though, your bill does, would do a great job of that. And there are private employers, like Deutsche Bank, for example, that have gone through the same step of providing a cash benefit to employees when the healthcare plan would not otherwise cover gay men.
Just as a side note, do you think that passage of 718 would help the private sector come more into the fold of giving IVF for gay men?
Absolutely. Every step that could be taken, whether it's a government or a big private company to lead the way, is a positive thing. And in fact, Aetna, one of the major insurers, recently adopted the ASRM Standard for Infertility that the city could embrace. So, more, more leaders, especially New York, given its leadership on LGBTQ issues, would be fantastic.
I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your leadership and all the other members in the council.
Thank you so much. Chair.
Alice Wong. Do we call them up together? No. You have five minutes.
Good afternoon, city council members. I am Alice Wong, the Executive Director for New York City Managerial Employees Association. Thank you for the hearing to address important health benefits for city employees. The MEA supports these three initiatives. We ask city council, or OLR, to clarify the insurance coverage amount and identify where the funding will come from. We seek clarification that these programs will not be expanded at the cost of additional employee contribution. We ask for clarification on how these new initiatives will tie to the current paid parental leave and paid family leave programs. We stand firm that the paid parental leave program that took away two annual leave days for managers who earns 27 days per year is unfair. This is because managers who earn less than 20 days per year do not contribute any annual leave days to fund the program. It is most likely that these are the managers who would benefit from the program. We thank you for your time and attention to these important matters.
Thank you very much. If there's anyone who's present here today that still would like to testify, please fill out a sheet with the Sergeant-at-Arms. Otherwise, we're going to move to Zoom testimony. Thank you very much. You have three minutes to testify.
You may begin.
Thank you. Good day, Honorable Chair and council members. My name is Jory Dugan, and I am Human Rights Counsel at the Center for Reproductive Rights, a legal advocacy organization that uses the power of law to advance reproductive rights as fundamental human rights around the world. As part of our mission, we aim to ensure that all people have meaningful access to fertility care regardless of sexual orientation, relationship status, or income. New York is, in many ways, a model for fertility care legislation, and it can continue to be a leader by making critical improvements to the current insurance law to ensure inclusive, nondiscriminatory, and equitable access to fertility care. As you heard of it today, one significant barrier under the current law is the requirement that enrollees meet a definition of infertility that makes access to care more difficult or impossible for individuals unable to become pregnant because they, either by themselves or with their partners, do not have the necessary gametes. This is one of the reasons the center strongly supports Resolution Number 165, as the Equity in Fertility Treatment Act would amend the definition of infertility to be inclusive of single individuals and same-sex couples, and make it clear under the law preventing any kind of confusion or discrepancies in providing access that we are seeing in practice today. Additionally, the strong, the center also strongly legal, supports the introduced bill, 718, because New York City employees should be able to access fertility care regardless of sexual orientation or relationship status. This is extremely important, and it's why we support Bill 718. Also, under the broad range of assisted reproduction services that are included under the definition of assisted reproduction in this bill, the bill would also ensure intended parents have access to legal services related to establishing parentage, which is extremely important to protecting families formed via assisted reproduction, particularly LGBTQ families. Laws and policies that, you know, promote access to fertility care, like Resolution 165 and Bill 718, or 718, promote people's reproductive rights, address inequalities and inequities in assisted care, and help to ensure equitable access to fertility care for all New Yorkers. By passing Resolution 165 and Bill 718, New York would be able to expand coverage for fertility care, taking extremely important steps to ensuring everyone has access to the services they need to build their families. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much. And now, we have Stephen Spandorfer from the Society of Assisted Reproductive Technology.
You're good, you're on.
Okay, yes, I, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. We were just in Washington DC with the Democratic bill, and this is a very important endeavor. I'm actually the President of the Society of Assisted Reproductive Technology, which is our IVF national society. I'm a physician in New York at Cornell, been practicing IVF here for about, almost 30 years. And also, I'm board member of the American Society of Reproductive Medicine. And I think the important parts of like, a lot of what has been stated, I think, need to be restated, is that infertility itself needs to be looked at as, it is, it's not something that somebody did to themselves specifically. It is actually a disease and should be treated as such. It's very common, almost 15% of all couples. And I think some of the important parts is to recognize that, as been referenced, the American Society of Reproductive Medicine, we did actually change the definition of infertility a couple of years back of anybody needing reproductive services. And there definitely, I've seen through the years, many patients sort of having to undergo multiple, for example, inseminations before they're actually classified as infertile. Obviously, for gay male couples, that never can happen, and they've run into some very significant logistic roadblocks, particularly to the financing of all this, given the need for gestational carriers and all of that. I think the most important part is to recognize that infertility is something that happens to somebody and that we, as a society, should recognize that it is a fundamental right. You know, and when we look at what's happened in Washington, first, the Republicans had their bill, which, you know, tied it into Medicaid and got shot down, and the Democrats had their bill, and just goes to show that all this has become this sort of bipartisan back and forth, which is unfortunate when it comes to healthcare and really taking care of people, doing something that's very important of trying to build families. So, I think I applaud you for the bills, and I really can't stress enough that, you know, even when, you know, he was throwing out the numbers and 10% of the budget of the city is spent on healthcare, my, you know, if you look at what was spent on fertility services, it's a drop in the bucket. And I think basically, one shouldn't shy away from these important endeavors just based on that. And that's really what I wanted to say, you know, as a member of, you know, as a practicing physician undergoing, you know, treating many, many patients through many years and, you know, currently serving with the ASRM Board as well as the SART Society. But thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go to Jason Chianciato from Gay Men's Health Crisis.
You may begin.
Sorry, my camera's off. Let's see if I can get it on. Hello, Chair Schulman, Health Committee members, and other esteemed council members. Thanks for the opportunity to testify. Jason Chianciato, the Vice President of Public Policy and External Affairs at GMHC. We were founded in 1982 as Gay Men's Health Crisis, the world's first HIV and AIDS services organization, and our mission is to end the AIDS epidemic and uplift the lives of all affected. We serve 5,500 New Yorkers throughout the year in all five boroughs with programs that address the structural drivers of the epidemic. Notably, we serve New Yorkers who are disproportionately affected by many issues, including HIV. And I want to talk about these structural drivers relative to the three city bills that we're discussing today. The first you may see is more directly linked, GMHC's mission, Intro 718, which really addresses the need for accessible medical care, in this case, rapid testing for HIV and other STIs. As has been shared in earlier testimony, according to the OHMH, we saw significant increases in syphilis and chlamydia among New Yorkers from 2021 to 2022. I won't take the time to repeat that data. And we also saw essentially a flat change in new HIV infections from 2021 to 2022. Now, there is some open question as to how much lack of access to STI testing services during the COVID-19 pandemic affected that, but again, I think we could all agree that now is the time to preserve and expand services rather than leave barriers to testing unaddressed. And these barriers include the fact that only two boroughs, Manhattan and Brooklyn, have year-round rapid testing services, which is why we join Intro 718 sponsor, Councilmember Sanchez, and other members of the council in calling for the expansion of rapid testing to clinics in Queens, the Bronx, and Staten Island. I also want to quickly note that GMHC has submitted an FY25 New York City capital grant that would enable us to own and operate two mobile STI testing vans, which could help provide these critical services in those boroughs. Stigma and discrimination are also pervasive structural drivers of the HIV epidemic, particularly stigma and discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. Lack of equal access to family formation and planning services communicates to members of LGBTQI+ communities that they are somehow less than and are unworthy relative to their heterosexual peers. This was the case prior to the advent of same-sex marriage nationwide, and it is the case in New York City regarding access to assisted reproduction and adoption for city employees. As has been testified, the current definition of infertility precludes access by gay male couples who need to procure donor services from non-insured third parties. Combined with the fact that the city lacks any adoption benefit services.
You can continue and finish. Go ahead.
Sure, I'm almost done. Thank you. The city precludes LGBTQI couples from building their families. And, you know, the argument that, by the administration, that the Taylor Law and the need to expand these services via collective bargaining process, I'll leave that up to folks who are attorneys. But what I do know is that we join Councilmember Schulman sponsoring Intro 435 and Resolution 165 sponsoring our CICE and other council members in supporting statutory definitions of infertility and adoption benefits so that all may benefit and so this stigma and discrimination may end. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I'm going to make a last call. If there's anybody online that would like to testify, please use the raise hand function. Let's see.
Seeing no hands, I'm going to.
Oh, seeing no hands, I'm going to close out the testimony and, and today's hearing. I just want to say thank you again to Chris, and we really appreciate you being here and this, I mean, Corey, I'm sorry. Like, you're Chris. It's been a day today for all of us. Corey, sorry. And so, you know, we heard a lot of interesting testimony today. We're going to circle back with the administration on the information that they said that they would provide to us subsequently, and we look forward to pursuing this and making sure that the practice of infertility is available to all employees. As I said earlier, we provide healthcare in this city for folks regardless of their immigration status, regardless of their ability to pay, and should be done regardless of their, of who they love. So, on that note, I end today's hearing. Thank you.